You should clean up.
Right, yeah, cool. Alright, we're good everybody. The special meeting of the Annapolis City Council on Monday, March 12th, 2018 will be called to order at seven o'clock. At this time, would everyone willing and able, please stand for the invocation given by Alderman Rodriguez, followed by the pledge of allegiance. We know you're a good Catholic, come on.
Thanks, thanks.
It's all a script.
I forgot, I knew I should've prepared it. Just hope we have the strength to represent our community in the correct way and make informed and wise decisions so that we can continue to provide meaningful access to everyone in our community in order to have a good quality of life, because when every family does better, that's when our community will thrive. So, thank you and amen.
All the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Here.
Alderman Tierney?
Here.
Alderman Payon?
Here.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Here.
Alderman Finlayson?
Present.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Present.
Alderman Henson?
Here.
Alderman Savage?
Present.
Alderman Arnett?
Present.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, please call the first item on the agenda.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended to remove O-14-18 Development Review Process Amendments for tonight's agenda and add O-14-18 to Development Review Process Amendments to the agenda for March 19th, 2018. So move. Anybody against? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the agenda is a ceremonial item, the swearing in of police officers. Sure. Due to circumstances beyond our control, we will pass on this for the moment and move on to the next item and bring this item back. I think that was the intention of the city clerk. So, as it stands, and because of that, I believe the next item on the agenda is City Council Citation Regarding the Police Department's Retired Canines. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
That's right, yeah, yeah. Okay, Major Herman, would you please join us at the front table?
Could you use the mic, please?
The Police Department would very much like to thank the...
The Police Department would very much like to thank the council for allowing us to recognize two of our canine officers. We consider them members of our own Annapolis PD family, and unfortunately, the first citation goes to Jago, one of our officers who passed away recently. I'd like to read the citation just for the record. "On behalf of the citizens of the city of Annapolis, we're pleased to confer upon you the City Council Citation: Recognition of the Service of Annapolis Police Canine Jago. He started with the Police Department in February of 2011 and was partnered with Corporal Mike Sofakles. Jago was brought to the Police Department trained as a narcotics detection dog, and his training was advanced through the in-house training program to include additional patrol functions. Corporal Sofakles and Jago maintained certification to both the Annapolis Police Department Canine Standards and the standard support by the International Police Dog Association. On February 28th, 2018, Canine Jago succumbed to complications from bone cancer. Corporals Sofakles and Jago were partners for seven years, and it saddens us all under the circumstances of..." The next, unfortunately, the officer who isn't here to receive the citation, but the canine is, of course, a member of our family, so we still want to read it into the record. The canine's name is Cero. Cero was an Annapolis Canine Dog. He started with the Annapolis Police Department in the spring of 2013. He was assigned to Corporal Freeman, who, as I say, unfortunately can't be here tonight. The team underwent initial training through the Basic Canine School, co-topped by the Canine Training for Annapolis, was trained through the Maryland State Police, and met all police training standards. Corporal Freeman, at the time, has now been promoted to Sergeant Freeman, and so his dog was retired for service, but we do thank them for their service in absentia. Finally, we wanted to thank the Chesapeake Canine Foundation. The Canine Foundation is of immense assistance to us. Could I ask the representatives to come up? One of you, the president. What the Canine Foundation does for us is they allow us to raise money through the philanthropic, through charitable, and business organizations, and they allow us, I'm sure the city taxpayers thank them greatly for their contribution. We're able to get dogs through them, the training through them, and we'd like to thank them very much for their service.
Mr. City Attorney, next, Alderman Agenda, please.
You might have heard this already before, Mr. Mayor, but the next item on the agenda is now a ceremonial item, the swearing in of police officers.
Could Chief Officer Schaefer, Officer Davis, and Officer Zoraski, would you please come to the table? Do you say your name?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, white dude. Aye, check your friend.
Do you swear in a firm as the case may be?
Do you swear in a firm as the case may be?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true religion?
That I will be faithful and bear true religion.
For the state of Maryland?
For the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof?
Support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And that I will do the best of my skill and judgment?
That I will do the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of police officer?
Execute the office of police officer.
According to the Constitution and laws?
According to the Constitution and laws.
Of this state and the charter?
Of this state and the charter.
And code of the city of Annapolis.
And code of the city of Annapolis.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation of a check from the Chesapeake Canine Foundation.
Could Representatives of the Chesapeake Canine Foundation, please, join us at the front table?
We sort of skipped, we sort of skipped the agenda, we did that with the citation. That's coming.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
I'm pleased to do that, Mr. Mayor. The next item on the agenda is petitions, reports, and communications, beginning with reports by committees.
Is there any older person that would like to present a report? Alderman Henson?
The next meeting of the Housing and Human Welfare Committee will be on Wednesday, March 14th, at 5:30 PM in council chambers. That is not our normal time. We've elevated the schedule and adjusted it to try and get your appointments to the Housing Authority Board before the council as soon as possible. So, anyone interested in meeting and greeting and getting to know the mayor's appointments for the Housing Authority Board can join us here on March 14th at 5:30 PM. It will be Alderman Tierney, Alderman Payon, and myself.
Thank you. Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Environmental Matters Committee meeting, we've changed the meeting date and time. It will now be on the third Wednesday of every month at 3:00 PM. And so, at the next meeting, we will be hearing from the Department of Plan and Zoning to give a development update, and we'll also be hearing from the Department of Public Works, where they will be talking about the stormwater pumps that are being proposed to be installed downtown to address flooding mitigation.
Thank you.
And we also have some legislation on the docket. I can't remember what it is off the top of my head.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Finance Committee meeting, the committee will be meeting this Wednesday, the 14th, seems to be a popular day, at 10:30, at which time we will get a preliminary report on the capital improvement program, and we'll also talk about some of the developments with the budget, and hopefully, we'll also look at the software program we have to help us chart out the budget in a more graphical fashion.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. The rules in city government will meet tomorrow, the 13th, at 4:00 here in council chambers, and we'll be taking up four pieces of legislation, O-818 Adequate Public Facilities, O-1018 Police Advisory Board, O-1118 The Stanton Center Lease, and O-1218 Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Authorities. So, again, tomorrow, 4:00 here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Transportation Committee met March 8th, and we had a presentation by Alex Pline from the Transportation Board, how we can work together on some of our similar initiatives. And Sally Nash made a presentation on the Bike Share Program, which was very exciting. And we did review legislation, which is to be voted on tonight, O-3-18, the Abandoned Vehicles Ordinance and Resolution, and it was recommended favorably as amended by my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Pindell Charles?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met on March 5th at 6:00 PM, joined by members Alderman Payon as well as Alderman Henson. Business before the committee was a presentation regarding hospital rewriting and the statistics from Deputy Chief Romalian Acting City Manager/Fire Chief Stokes, who were present and gave a brief overview of the hospital rewriting stats. We requested another report to be presented to the committee in May. We also had a general discussion from the Police Department. Chief Baker was present, gave a brief update on the Annapolis Police Department. He also discussed active shooter procedures and the possibility of training teachers and administration in the schools. Acting City Manager/Fire Chief Stokes was present, further discussed procedures and active shooter drills. We also had an update on the 2017 opioid epidemic review, year-to-date update for 2018. Office of Emergency Management, with Director Simmons present, along with Executive Director Baxter from the Lighthouse Shelter, provided a brief update of the emergency evacuation of Lighthouse Shelter's residents. Chief Baker and GIS Coordinator Sean Wapler were both present, spoke on the opioid crisis. Emergency Planner Hudson gave a brief overview on the different programs and initiatives that are available in the city of Annapolis. Tonight, we will, as Alderman Tierney indicated, be voting on the abandoned vehicles and wrecked or non-operating vehicles on public property, which was recommended favorably with amendments through the Public Safety Committee. Our next meeting will be on Monday, April 2nd, at 6:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. City, oh, Alderman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic Matters Committee met on March 8th, 8 at 3:00 PM, and we gave a favorable recommendation to O-418, which was Plumbing Code Updates and Amendments, essentially for the purpose of adopting the International Plumbing Code and prohibiting underground use of foam core waste lines. It was really very exciting.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is comments by the general public.
During comments by the general public, the public may speak on any item not scheduled for public hearing tonight. Legislation scheduled for public hearing, O-1818 Adequate Public Facilities, Adequate School Facility Standards, O-1018 Policy Advisory Board, Police Advisory Board, sorry, O-1118 Stanton Center Lease Agreement, Anna Randle Workforce Development Corporation, O-11218 Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Authorities Attendance at meetings. The first speaker is Joanne Matson. Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Joanne Matson. I'm here representing the Lighthouse. I'm the executive director, and I'm here tonight to just offer our deepest gratitude to you, Mayor Buckley, the city of Annapolis, for responding so quickly and so compassionately to the emergency that we had. As many of you know, the Saturday before last, we had to evacuate our emergency shelter. It was a problem that was caused by an issue with our HVAC system, which caused some antifreeze smell to go throughout the building. We had to evacuate people, and the city of Annapolis, the mayor's office, I saw Brian back there, thanks, Brian, Chief Simmons from the Office of Emergency Management, the Fire Department, the Department of Transportation, the Police Department, I don't want to forget anybody, but I'm telling you right away, I mean, of course, it happened midnight on a Saturday night, and by 8:00 AM the next morning, we were on a conference call together to talk about what to do, and I have to tell you, from firsthand experience, my confidence in the capacity of the city to respond to an emergency is absolutely as sure as it could be. I was just so impressed, but even more than the efficiency was, as I said, the compassion and the care for our folks. We had to move about 50 people from the Lighthouse that evening with public transportation and get them first to the Stanton Center, and then Chief Simmons arranged with Archie... Thank you. Archie Trader, thank you, to move our folks into the Pitt Moyer Center. And we were welcomed there, and we had a beautiful place to stay, and we are grateful to be back home by Wednesday afternoon and transported back by the Department of Transportation again. So, I want to thank, so I don't forget anybody, thank you to our ever vigilant local government departments and offices that responded with swift action, expertise, and heart. This includes the city of Annapolis, Mayor Gavin Buckley and the mayor's office, Chief Kevin Simmons and the Office of Emergency Management, Chief David Stokes and the Annapolis Fire Department, Rick Gordon and the Department of Transportation, Chief Scott Baker and the Annapolis Police Department, Archie Trader in the city of Annapolis Recreation and Parks, all city and county emergency teams, Rodney Dillard in the Pitt Moyer Recreation Center, and the We Care and Friends Stanton Community Center. We'd also like to express our gratitude to the many local organizations, groups, and volunteers who did not miss a beat and continue to donate their time and much-needed assistance. So, we have a certificate of appreciation to you, Mayor Buckley and the city of Annapolis. I was going to have all our folks sign it, but then it was kind of so pretty, we didn't want to mess it up, but we are going to be delivering some homemade brownies to your office. So, anyway, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you for everything you do. The next speaker is Robert Eads.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here today, I guess it was about a month ago I was here, and I was complaining about the lack of meters patrolling my area, Clay Street area, 4th Ward, what I call special favors to special people, because the people living in College Creek Terrace and Overhead Court are allowed to come up on Pleasant Street or Clay Street and park and take up spots of the homeowners there, and, but if we park over on their lot, if we see an empty spot over there, we're towed away $225. And I've complained about this before these buildings were completed and afterwards. Nothing is being done. Something has to be done. Why, if you got parking enforcement, they work up to 12:00 at night, I think. Nobody comes on our street, nobody gets tickets that don't have stickers in their window. This is totally unfair. The last time I was here, you said you would look into that. Also, I'm here tonight, the last time I was here, complained about 250 cab, 200, I'm sorry, 200 cabs, maybe 225, licensed in the city of Annapolis with four legal parking spots. Now, I've been bringing this issue for the last 15 years, and all we get is we're going to look into it. Something has to be done. The Uber guys, they come in and they just park anywhere, and we can't park. Say, for instance, if it's, I'm talking about loading zones, after 3:00 in the afternoon or 2:00, the loading zones are free. Some of the cabs used to try to use those for a place to park, but the Uber guys, since it's not marked as a place to park, the Uber guys come in and they park there. And we're just getting treated unfairly by the city with the parking enforcement, with the parking spaces for taxi cabs. Again, you said last month ago or so that we would be looked into that. Haven't heard anything. That's the first thing. Second, I'm here, you ran, and I supported you, and I took you around the communities on inclusiveness of the African-American or the black community. At this point, people are coming to me saying, okay, Robert, what's inclusion? What's going on? What are we doing? I can't answer them because there's been a breakdown between City Hall and myself, who was supposed to be liaison to solving these problems or help bring these problems forth to you. And one of the last ones was the commissioners picked at the Housing Authority Board of Education, I'm sorry, so many things, school stuff going on, at the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. You selected new commissioners, but the community who they will serve or look over was not included in that selection. And what we're saying when they say not included, we're not saying that anytime that we're included in a conversation or whatever, that we expect for you to make a decision on what we say, but we do expect for you to say, okay, I'm making some new commissioner appointments, does the community, the Red Board who represents the public housing community, do you have any possible suggestions? That would be what we consider as inclusive. That's not happening, and it didn't happen. We don't think, and we hope that you don't think, because you hired two blacks who well-qualified... qualified, no complaints about them at all, there's no complaint about the way Mrs. Wilburn is running the Housing Authority. I'd like to get that out there. But at the same time, we don't feel we're being inclusive, so I was told to come and ask you at this point, still the promises, promises, can we get something in writing what you consider to be, where to be inclusive of the black community in the city of Annapolis? Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. I'm gonna come out and see you. We can walk around.
At this point, Mr. Mayor, walk around was good when we were running. Now, we're looking for some possible solutions.
Okay.
I mean, we don't expect for you to come up and solve every solution, but we're now looking to hear some possible solutions that would make the black community inclusive within the city of Annapolis, and we mean the whole city. This young lady keeps asking me, tell the mayor what she said he was gonna do? You asked me about the downtown? She's still asking about that first, Will. So, you have to handle that. That's on you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Robert. Kimberly? Sorry. Thank you, sorry. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Kimberly Ashkenazi, but I think I signed up in the wrong portion of the sign sheet.
Okay, you have the adequate public facilities?
Yes, I am.
Okay, it's the next one up, so thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Myself and David Yuram are both here for the adequate public facilities.
So, I'll call you up in a second. Outside of adequate public facilities, anyone else here to speak?
Mr. Mayor, member of the council, Doug Smith. We reside at 5 Revel Street. I try to come to the council a couple times a year and give you a good report on our Start the Adventure in Reading program. So, I've passed out to you a copy of our annual report for this year. The good news is, we have 83 children, first and second graders, enrolled in the program this year, and by May, after our 12 years with this program, we will have graduated over 400 kids who entered the program not able to read at a second-grade level. By the time we get to May, we'll have about three-fourths of those kids reading at second-grade level or above. So, we're in all the Annapolis schools, so we're active in all the wards of the city. We have a great bunch of kids in the program this year who are just the sweetest second graders you'd ever want to meet, and we very much appreciate the fact that we're working closely with the county school board, because while we don't have a direct impact on the school system, this is a volunteer effort from folks in the Annapolis community who are helping kids to learn how to read. So, we have over 160 volunteers, some new volunteers this year, Ellie's helping as well. These are folks that spend two days a week with an individual student for the entire year. So, this is how we're able to help them get over the obstacles they face in learning to read. So, I just want to tell you, we're almost through this school year, so I hope to be able to report 83 happy graduates when we get to May, and we're gonna keep the program going, so thank you for your support.
Thank you so much, Doug. Alderman Pendell-Chauncey?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Smith. We really appreciate all the hard, hard work that you and particularly Ms. Barber give to our community and to our students. It is extremely important, and I'm looking at the quote, because this year, we are celebrating Frederick Douglass's 200th birthday, and I see you have on the back a quote from Frederick Douglass, "Once you learn to read, you will be forever free." And I think that pretty much sums it up. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you.
Alderman Tierney?
I just have to say, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Doug, thank you so much for what you've done since you've, you know, been chairman, and I also have to say, being a volunteer has been so rewarding and emotional, I don't, I'm gonna regret graduation because I've gotten so attached, but for anyone that doesn't think they have the time, it doesn't, you know, it's worth it, and the relationship that you build, and just to introduce, you know, a set of structure to these children, it's just, it's just so rewarding, and thank you for that opportunity.
Yeah. Well, we can always use more tutors. We have 160 volunteers now. You can become a tutor, we'll train you, you don't need any prior experience, so we're always happy to bring more people into the program. That lets us service more kids. The more tutors we have, the more we can, we can work with. So, our website is stareanapolis.org, and we happy to have more people sign up. Thank you.
Alderman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Smith, phenomenal program. My question is, what is the school board doing to supplement what you're doing? You know, you can't reach all the kids that are in need, and you manage to touch quite a few, and that's greatly appreciated. Is the school system making any efforts to imitate or replicate the program that you have brought to them?
Well, first of all, we don't get any money from the school board, okay, but we do get help from the reading teachers who say suggestions on how to deal with kids that are having maybe trouble with English vowel sounds or sight words. They give us great support like that. The fact that we use exactly the same curriculum for our tutoring program that the teachers use during the day, this complements what they do. So, you notice there's a quote from Dr. Erlato on the cover. They really appreciate that they can't, they don't have enough hours during the day to provide the tutoring that we do. So, it's a partnership, we're happy to help, but we don't get any money.
And I wasn't suggesting that you did, I was just wondering if they would, if the school system is making any efforts. You know, we know that reduction of class size, additional planning time, there are things that can be done that will help teachers reach the kids and help the volunteers reach the kids.
Yeah.
So, my question is always to the school board, what are we doing to reach those kids who are, who have the greatest needs?
Well, the reading teachers give us the children they think could benefit. They provide space for us in the school, so we do this on the school site or in the community center if we don't have room there. So, they're helping in the ways that they can, and it's a good partnership for us.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Doug. Seeing no motion in the chamber, I declare the comments by the general public closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is an update from the mayor.
So, we had an amazing St. Patrick's Day parade. I want to thank all the city staff that worked so hard to make that thing go off flawlessly. If you get a chance to go to the Command Center, you'll see how professional your staff work. It was amazing. You're like a well-oiled machine, but the big announcement is Ta'keah Green's birthday. So, we're all gonna sing happy birthday to Ta'keah. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, dear Ta'keah. Happy birthday to you.
Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
It's a tough act to follow. The next item on the agenda is an appointment, AP 2-18, nominations to Board of Supervisors of Elections, Annapolis Charter, Article 2, Section 6B.
This time, I would entertain a motion to confirm the appointments of Eileen Leahy, Clifford Myers, and Brianna Cuffey as members of the Board of Supervisors of Election.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I would be remiss if I, I think, and I think you would be too, if you did not recognize the efforts of John O'Leary and his staff for putting the parade together. They're the ones who really were behind it, the Warrior Events and a large group of Irish-Americans who acted as marshals and really put that thing together. We honored Mr. O'Leary, I believe, last year with a city council citation, and as far as I'm concerned, for putting that parade together and bringing five or 10,000 people downtown. He deserves one of those every year. He did a phenomenal job.
Yeah, I should have thanked him. Yeah, I thanked him at the holly, as I was dressed as a convict, because, you know, Australians are all Irish convicts, so. Yeah, before John O'Leary, our parades were very boring, weren't they?
Well, we all know St. Patrick was born in Italy anyway, so.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar include journals of proceedings, CCM 021218, regular meeting minutes, CCM 021218S, special meeting minutes, and CCM 022618, special meeting minutes. Also, budget revision request, GT-1618, transfer from water distribution upgrades, transfer to water treatment plant, CIP. First readers, R-818, amendments to Title 15 of the FY 2018 fees schedule, refer to Financial Advisory Commission, Finance Committee, and the Environmental Matters Committee. R-918, city emblems prohibited uses and fine, refer to Finance Committee and the rules and city government. R-1018, filing of grant application with the Maryland Transit Administration, refer to the Finance Committee and the Transportation Committee. And 0-1318, city emblems prohibited uses, refer to Finance Committee and the rules and city government. Second readers, 0-418, plumbing code updates and amendments, and that is the end of the consent calendar items.
Is there any objections to the items on the consent calendar?
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Madam City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Yes.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Pao?
Aye.
Alderman Pendell-Chauncey?
Aye.
And Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is public hearings, beginning with Ordinance 0-818, adequate public facilities, adequate school facilities, dash standards, dash for the purpose of amending the test for additional school capacity by requiring schools with enrollment greater than 95% of the state-rated capacity to be listed as closed on the annual school utilization chart, and matters generally relating to adequate school facilities.
Okay, our first speaker is Stephen Hyatt.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Stephen Hyatt, I work in the city, Hyden Webber, 200 Westgate Circle. The city's fiscal situation exists in a perpetual state of struggle with static revenues and ever-increasing annual expenses. The forecast for any potential sustainability is bleak. I'm certainly not stating anything you don't already know, but it's your job as the city's elected stewards to ensure and safeguard the city's future fiscal sustainability for the residents who elected you. Council is well aware and has repeatedly recognized the looming financial disaster facing the city. In 2017, the Finance Committee's budget report stated in part, coming years are projected to be increasingly difficult. Personnel costs, year to year, exceed the annual increase in property tax. Aggressive steps need to occur to address the static revenue stream of the city. The next few budgetary cycles will require significant changes in an effort to remain sustainable. In Alderman Arnett's 2017 analysis of the 10-year budget projections, he stated in part, no matter how one slices it, the latest set of 10-year projections point to the way of financial disaster. The choices facing the city are not attractive. To cover each year's deficit, either property taxes, the only discretionary revenue tool available to the budget, must be increased at an increasing rate, or services must be reduced or eliminated. It's abundantly clear that property tax revenue is the lifeblood of the city's budget. Property tax revenue made up 42.5%, 44%, and 42% of the city's total revenue from 2015 to 2017, and it's projected to be 42.8% for 2018. With that in mind, one would assume that an analysis of fiscal impact resulting from this legislation, which would essentially reduce future property tax growth in the city down to a trickle, would be rather detailed and lengthy. Well, you would be wrong. In fact, the analysis of fiscal impact is only two measly sentences that attempt to downplay and mask this legislation as far less impactful than it truly is. This excuse for fiscal impact analysis is entirely unacceptable, and it is insulting to the residents and business owners of this city. What this alleged analysis of fiscal impact fails to report is the direct negative impact it will have on the residents and business owners of this city. As Alderman Arnett stated in his 10-year budget projections, the city will either have to raise property taxes or reduce, possibly even eliminate, current city services or a combination of the two. Home prices will thus continue to rise with little to no new moderately or affordably-priced housing for the city's workforce, first-time homebuyers, young families, minorities, or artists and musicians looking to live and work in Annapolis. And what kind of message does this send? Sorry, we're full, try again when you're ready to retire, and you can actually afford to live here. Not so welcoming, especially for the capital of the state. Look, the city didn't even have APF for school until just a couple of years ago, passed in Ordinance 03615, and certainly enough time hasn't passed to test whether it was adequately addressed then to currently change it from that. Furthermore, how can you justify lowering the capacity requirements for the only high school when it is the only high school that the city feeds into, but it serves multiple communities in the county? If school capacity is such a problem, which I don't agree that it is, then how about proposing an ordinance that actually deals with that problem? The city council should work on securing meaningful city participation in the county school decision-making process, where it has none today. How about providing affordable housing that, say, more teachers could afford on average teacher salaries, so that schools can handle increased student capacity? There are a whole host of solutions that adequately address the actual problem of school capacity, but what is being proposed by this ordinance is not one of those solutions. The city and the city council should be encouraging smart and strategic development that add to the city's revenue stream, not shutting the city's doors and sinking the proverbial shift. Preventing development projects in the manner proposed by this ordinance is entirely contrary to state planning, and it exhibits strong undertones of preemption. State Finance and Procurement Article Title V, Subtitle 7B, identifies Annapolis as a priority funding area, and this is where development needs to happen. This ordinance also conflicts with Anna Randle County's Exceptional Family Members Program, which encompasses the city, and provides that priority funding areas are locations where the state and local governments want to target their efforts to encourage and support economic and new growth. Simply put, this ordinance is bad for everyone. There will be no winners and only losers, and the losers, the city's residents and business owners, will face increased taxes and decreased city services. Yet, nothing will have been done to mitigate the alleged school capacity as this ordinance claims to address. I strongly implore the council to reject this proposed legislation and to go back to the drawing board to craft meaningful legislation that benefits... the drawing board to craft meaningful legislation that benefits the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Next speaker, David Katz.
Good evening. It's a tough act to follow. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the council this evening, but unfortunately, I believe that the legislation proposed is a mistake and would have unintended devastating consequences for the city. And to give you an analogy, if you take schools and make it a flooding basement, what this legislation does is it focuses on a little minor crack exclusively and completely neglects a gaping hole. The result is, the basement still floods. This does not solve the problem. As Stephen mentioned, this legislation would basically cut development off in the city entirely, it would, which would eliminate a prime funding source for new school construction or funding towards capital improvement projects for existing schools, but also place a freeze on the tax basis. So you have to fund the government with alternative means. That means loss of services, programs, and resources, and increased taxes, making the city less resourceful and more expensive to live. That's a big focal point, how expensive it's becoming to live in the city. I want to give you some facts. Looking at the schools now that are overcrowded, Tyler Heights Elementary, 133% of capacity, Mills Parole Elementary, 110%, and Annapolis High at 102%. They're not accurate, actually, and they're not a result of development. First and foremost, if you look at actual building permits that are issued in these areas, especially Tyler Heights and Mills Parole, there's next to none. Mills Parole, the numbers don't reflect the Monarch Academy. If you take into account the Monarch students that are actually attending and not attending Mills Parole, the capacity dips down to 92%. With regard to the high school, the high school hosts the county's Magnet program. And here's the problem, the city has no control over how the county dictates schools, all controlled by the county. Well, right now, Annapolis High, as I said, is at 102%. If you remove the Magnet students, that's 220 students, the capacity goes down to 92%. And if you look at other high schools in the county, Chesapeake, for instance, which is about 15 miles away, that school's at 52% of capacity. So there's room. I mean, this is a redistricting issue, this isn't a development issue. Really, the real problem with school overcrowding right now is how people are forced to live in the city. Multigenerational housing, and that's by necessity, because it's too expensive to live here. Here's some stats. The city's population, 56% Caucasian, 17% Hispanic, 22% African-American. In the last 10 years, I'm sorry, last five years, we've seen an increase in the Hispanic population of 10%, an increase in the Caucasian population of 3%, and a decline in the African-American community by 8%. Household income, roughly $60,000 for Hispanics, $37,000 for African-Americans, and $92,000 for Caucasians. Median home value for the city is $400,000. Median price of homes listed is half a million dollars. Now, the median price for homes sold is only 390,000. So what does that tell you? That tells you that nobody can afford these expensive houses. The only ones that are selling are the cheaper ones, and they're still not cheap. Looking at rents, median rent in Annapolis is $1,900 a month. That's $400 more a month than Baltimore City. Occupations, across all occupations, median income is $53,000 for full-time employees. So working backwards with the math, after someone who's earning $53,000 a year pays taxes, 25% bracket, pays property taxes, pays utilities, that leaves about $1,100 in disposable income a month. How can you afford daycare for your kids, groceries? It's impossible. And what this legislation will do is it'll make it nearly impossible for these types of incomes to live here. And I think that's an example. If you look at the African-American community and where they are at this point, income-wise, they're a declining population because it's way too expensive to live here. Really, the numbers don't lie. As I said, the city's already unaffordable, and the result of this legislation will make it impossible to afford. This will be a city exclusively for the wealthy. And, you know, and I hate to say it, if you look at how income is, income is spread across different races, you know, it'll be exclusively a community for rich white people, because those are the only ones at this point that have the income to afford to live here. So there are unintentional consequences of this legislation, because it basically puts minorities out of the market, and also removes, you know, employment opportunities for many lower-income families that want to reside in the city. The last thing I wanted to talk about was really comparing this legislation to the county's APF legislation. You know, because, as I think most of the council knows, the county recently adopted 95% for its school capacity threshold. But this legislation does not mirror the county's. There's a lot of differences, and I'll point them out. First, the intent of the county's legislation is to slow development, leading up to its general development process, and there's a sunset on their legislation. So once the GDP is introduced to the council, the 95% goes away. This legislation closes the city entirely from development. The county does not do that. The county doesn't have one high school serving it, so it doesn't close the entire county. The county's test is based off of a school utilization chart that's adopted by the council. There's public input, because sometimes the numbers aren't right. So at least there's public hearing and there's questioning to Anaronda County Public Schools. The city's chart is merely a calculation done by the Planning and Zoning Director from the county's master plan, with no public input. Most importantly, the county's bill excludes certain town centers, where it wants to push growth and development, the Parole Town Center, the Odenton Town Center. In my mind, Annapolis is the original Anaronda County Town Center, and should be, there should be no test. This is where growth should occur. Lastly, I would just say that, you know, another thing that's not been considered in this bill is the city's current comprehensive plan, which clearly identified opportunity areas, where it wants to see growth, where it wants to see development. You know, an example would be the Upper West Street area. A recent sector study done there concluded that the number-one item required or requested by the residents is affordable housing, and the need for affordable housing in this area. That's all. Thank you very much for the time.
Thanks, David. Just some questions. Alderman Pao.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Would you oppose legislation that directly paralleled the county legislation?
I would, because there is only one high school serving. Well, for two reasons. There's only one high school serving the city.
By the way, I totally agree with you about the redistricting.
Yeah.
Issue. I agree.
So frankly, if there was some communication with Anaronda County Public Schools, and it was, hey, we're boiling over here at Annapolis High, you've got half-capacity at Chesapeake, we need the room. You know, that's something to, that should be a discussion had with Anaronda County Public Schools, but I would say it shouldn't mirror the county's, because you don't want to close the city entirely. The county doesn't want to close development entirely. This legislation does. And also, the county's legislation sunsets when the GDP is introduced to the council. I don't know where we are from the city's standpoint in terms of doing a new comprehensive plan.
Do you have any suggestions of how this might be made?
Yeah. I do. First, I mean, I think that we have a-
Hope you realize I'm playing the devil's advocate a little bit here.
No, no, please do, please do. First and foremost, and as Stephen pointed out, we recently adopted APF legislation. We really haven't given that time to play out and see, you know, does it work? Does the city's adopted APF legislation actually work? At a minimum, my suggestions would be carving out affordable housing. It is clear that it is way too expensive to live here. We don't have enough housing for our workforce. And they have every right to live here, just as much as the rich people that have been here forever. So, specific carve-outs for affordable housing, but also targeted growth areas, opportunity areas. Development should, you know, it needs to be done in a smart way, but it should be pushed in certain areas. So whether it's breaking down small areas with, you know, creating small boundaries where elementaries are, and maybe you're only measuring the elementary schools, but closing the city entirely is the wrong move. The last thing I'd say, suggestion, Alderman, is, I forgot.
Well, would you have us carve out something like, in my ward, the WNAV property may be developed?
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, 2025 houses, something like that. I don't know that they're really targeting families with small children, but-
That's an absolute must, is, you know, a young professional or just the young workforce, the nurses, the teachers, the police officers, finding good housing for them.
Well, you know, in the city, we don't really have a lot of developments that are 250 houses, like the county does. Not that they have a lot of those, but they certainly do, and bigger than that, for sure. But, you know, our developments, as you probably know, tend to be 10, 20-
Yes.
Houses, occasionally a townhouse development, and we might have many more than that, but-
And definitely, Alderman, product type. You know, so 20 studio apartments in the Arts District, it's great for that community, and it will produce no students, yet as the test is done now, it couldn't be developed.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Alderman Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I assume that you're a developer and-
I'm an attorney, actually.
You're an attorney?
Yes.
Okay, because my question is, I clearly heard your message, and my frustration is, I don't hear much about affordable housing proposals, and how much, you know, backlog do you or a developer have presently of affordable housing proposals? What's on, you know, a lot of the stuff on the books now, you know, are half a million dollars or more, so I agree with your message, and I just want to hear more from developers that they have more affordable housing, you know, proposed.
So I believe the next speaker is a client of mine, who is an affordable housing developer, and really kind of, to that point, that's an application that's been submitted. That's a project where millions of dollars of tax credits have been awarded, hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent. You know, it's fully baked, and it's going to get railroaded by this legislation.
Yeah, and I, you know, the other term for it is workforce housing. You know, there's, for example, there's 30 tutors over at Saint John's that would love to live in the city of Annapolis, but they can't afford a half a million dollar condo.
No.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Mr. Katz?
I have-
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was listening to your numbers that you were bringing down to 92% for Annapolis High School. Are you talking about the IB program?
Yes, the Magnet program.
Right.
I counted the students, it's 223 students.
Now, how many of those students are actually within the Annapolis area, do you know?
It didn't break down that number. So I'd say there are some, I'm sure that there are some local students that are part of that program, but as I understand it, they're really being bused in from everywhere.
Correct.
Yeah.
But I didn't know how many of those are Annapolis area, that would be going to Annapolis High anyway. The reason I asked is because if you thought about possibly making the suggestion of shifting them to Northeast High School with the empty seats, then that would run contrary to those students, of course, who already live in an Annapolis area. And even, say, those who may live, because right now, it's Old Mill, Annapolis, and Mead, I believe. And so, there would have to be some adjustments, of course, made for those who live not near those schools.
Yes. But I would, I think the IB program is so well thought of, that if the program changes locations, the students are going to follow. And even if they are Annapolis City residents, they're going to follow the program. I think.
Right. I'm not speaking out of turn, but there was a reason for those three locations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman, if you'd like to.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along those same lines, you mentioned the IB program, but Annapolis High School has several other Magnet-type programs. IB is only one of them.
Sure.
Are you aware of what the others?
No, I mean, my understanding, and this is pulled off of Anaronda County Public Schools website, that there are 223 current students at Annapolis High that are a part of their specialty programs, that aren't, that don't have to be a resident. They don't have to follow the school district to attend. So I just have the raw numbers.
Because it is a school for the arts.
Yes.
It's an ESOL school, so there are at least three different, and I think there is one that I'm probably missing. I just wondered whether those numbers were cumulative for all of the Magnet programs.
I believe they are.
Or just the-
But I will, I'll confirm that, frankly.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just have a question about your Mills Parole calculation.
Yes.
Can you explain more about how you made that determination?
So, I've worked very closely with Scott Schuler at Anaronda County Public Schools. He is in charge of all the projections across all of the schools, and he specifically confirmed that the Mills Parole numbers do not reflect the actual enrollment at the Monarch Academy. I think with the redistricting, Mills Parole received 103 new students, and 108 enrolled at the Monarch Academy. Now, some have come back, and essentially, Anaronda County Public Schools has waited to see what those final projections are, and they have them now. And I'm hoping that the city is going to update its chart to accurately reflect what Mills Parole, where Mills Parole actually is. But per Scott Schuler, and I certainly recommend that you reach out to him, because he's a great resource, and he's just the raw numbers person for Anaronda County Public Schools. But he said that, you know, enrollment remains, you know, 100 or so students, which brings you down below even 95%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, David. Great information. Next speaker, Mary Ann Dillon. Please state your name and address.
Thank you very much. I'm Mary Ann Dillon. My address is 10002 Parkwood Drive in Bethesda, Maryland, and I'm the Executive Director of Housing Initiative Partnership, which is a nonprofit housing developer and counseling agency based in Prince George's County. And we're very excited to be partners on a property at 2010 West Street that's going to be 42 townhomes that are affordable to working families. We're partnering with Pearl, who will be the next speaker. They are the affordable housing developer, who will have more information on hard statistics for you. I just want to emphasize how hard it is in order to get one of these deals off the ground. We've been working on this for two years. It is very competitive to apply to the state to get tax credits in order to develop these sites. You need to have equity in them, because they don't pencil out on their own. That's why you have such a lack of affordable housing, because you need subsidies in order to make them work. We were awarded an allocation of tax credits 18 months ago. We are ready to go to closing by this June and start construction to develop 42 really attractive, high-quality townhomes for families, for working families here in Annapolis. And for this legislation to come up right now, it is a major monkey wrench for us. I want to emphasize that what we do in our organization, in our partnership, is that we provide resident services for the future residents that'll be at this property. And it may be things that are after-school programs, there may be homebuyer classes, there may be things that help families to maintain their independence and to increase their own personal wealth, so they can move up and on. And we're just concerned about the unintended consequences of this legislation. We understand and we respect completely the importance of making sure that our schools are not overcrowded, but we are gravely concerned about this legislation as has been introduced. Thank you.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What type of housing did you say this was, exactly?
I'm sorry, I couldn't-
What type of housing did you say this was?
These are going to be townhomes, or actually two stories above two stories, so it's something called two-over-two. It's a townhome-style development.
Affordable housing?
It is affordable housing, it will be rental housing.
Okay. What's the income limit on that?
I'm going to defer to Pearl to make sure I don't want to give wrong figures. I'm going to defer to Pearl to make sure I give, I don't want to give wrong figures, I think they have, will have the exact figures on what the income levels are that are being targeted.
And what's on the lot currently? Is it redevelopment, or is it forested?
No, it's a vacant, it's a vacant parcel.
Is it currently forested, or just...
It, it's right across the street from Monarch Academy.
Okay.
Alderman Annett?
Yeah, so, this is something we've been talking about within the council and with the mayor, and what would really be helpful, if you or others could give us a definition of affordable housing as a potential carve-out kind of thing, that would, first of all, we appreciate all of you coming and giving us testimony, it helps shape our thinking, and I think there is some notion that the carve-out to encourage affordable housing as opposed to high-end housing is appealing, so we could use your help in getting some language that would help define that kind of a carve-out.
Okay, the particular financing we have with, with the state tax credits, the housing has to be affordable to families earning less than sixty percent of the area median income, and we have a number of units that are targeted more deeply affordable than that, so we can take, you know, like, single moms, or people who really have a limited income, and work with them to make sure they're stable, and that they can increase their income over time, but sixty percent would be the maximum. We do have ten percent of the units, which would be five units that are market rate, because the state wants to promote mixed income.
I, I'm not clear, sixty percent of what?
Of the area median income, and I, I...
Of, yeah, okay.
I wish Pearl had gone first, because I can't...
Yeah, all right.
I don't have the exact figure. They will have the exact figures for you.
So, since you've all taken the effort to come out here, which, again, we appreciate, if you could just help us by giving us some suggestive language, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify a question that Alderman Savage had, even those rental units, it's fifteen years, and then with the option to purchase, is that correct, Ms. Mary Ann?
That is what we're intending to do, we're waiting for the final financing, so we need to circle back with you on that, but we are certainly going to be promoting homeownership at this site by having homebuyer classes, which is something our organization specializes in. Thank you.
Alderman Finnleisen?
Um, yes, well, now that I know what the product is, I have another question. We have a product similar to the one you're describing. Rent for fifteen years with an option to buy. Can you tell us what percentage of the annual rent goes toward the sale of the home?
Well, these are things that we still need to calculate, which is why I need to circle back with the older woman on this. What we pass along to the homebuyers would be all of the soft debt, all of the debt that is on the property, and unfortunately, the way the financing is going right now, because we've had so many changes in the federal government, in the tax credit pricing, there's probably going to be more debt on this property than we had expected in the beginning, so this is something that we are still looking at, but normally, the way that works is that you would pass along to the homebuyer any cost, any accumulated debt you had, and any kind of closing costs. So I can't give you an exact price on what these would be, if we were to sell them to the homebuyers. I would also say that if that option doesn't work out, or if that doesn't seem feasible, we are committed to working with these families to get them into homeownership. I mean, we think that that's the key to financial stability for every family.
The product that I am familiar with gives the resident one-hundred-and-eighty dollars of their annual rent towards the purchase of the home after fifteen years, which is tantamount to about three thousand dollars, which is a pittance, and I'm seeing, okay, I'd love to hear the answer.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to be caught answering a question that I can't answer correctly.
But I, I think the next gentleman will be able to answer my question, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next speaker, Kimberly Ashkenazi. Sorry. Can you say it for me? Sorry.
Ashkenazi, Ashkenazi.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kimberly Ashkenazi, I work for Pearl, we are the affordable housing developer, working on twenty-ten West Street, and I do have some handouts here. Can I submit this to the council for consideration?
Sure.
And the, the order that we intended to speak got a little bit mixed up, so from the outset, I would like to state that Dave Yerem, the principal of our company, one of the principals, is here this evening, and he can tell you more detail about how the lease-to-purchase will work, and, but to answer your question about the income, the four-person household, up to sixty percent of the area median income, makes just under fifty-five thousand dollars a year, so that's on household basis. And what I would like to take the opportunity to tell you this evening, is to introduce a little bit about ourselves and some other projects that we have done in Maryland. In particular, on the second page, there is a project that we finished in twenty-thirteen in Glen Burnie, Maryland, so that is also Anaronda County. This was a lease-to-purchase, this is single-family, twenty-two homes, and what I would like you to note is just the quality of the construction there. On-site, we have amenities such as the playground, community room, fitness center, computer lab. We work very closely with our partners, such as Mary Ann's organization, to ensure that all of our residents benefit from close coordination of community services, to help them achieve whatever it is that they can, are struggling with in their lives. And again, so, the quality of our construction through the state program, through which we complete our communities, even requires a much higher threshold for building, seventy-five percent masonry, and I hope that you can see in the pictures that it does jump off the page to you as indeed high-quality, and as kind of another side to that, part of this process is a very thorough investigation of the market that we are, would like to build in. In this particular market, we found twenty-two communities that served similar residence, workforce residents, and eight, the top, eight, top-tier communities, which were eight of them, were built an average year of two thousand and seven. The lower fourteen communities, the average placed-in-service year was nineteen-seventy-nine. So these are people living in Anaronda, teachers, was mentioned earlier, firefighters, perhaps first-year, police officers even, they would like to stay here, they would like to live here. They can't buy that half-a-million-dollar home that is, that is being produced here, however, we hope we can at least provide these forty-two-year units for them to live in, even temporarily. So that also brings me to my second point, which is the demand. As part of our market survey, we got statistics on what is the vacancy rate. The vacancy rate in the twenty-two similar properties was one-point-eight percent. So again, that shows demand off the charts. In properties that were produced through the same financing and partnership with the state, the vacancy rate was point-three percent. So again, we, in our experience, the first day that we open the leasing process, we have a waiting list of even hundreds of names, just really around the block, because these projects are small. The amount of subsidy that we can get through partnership with the state is limited, however, this is an opportunity for this project specifically to bring approximately twenty million dollars of investment. As Mary Ann stated, we have been working on this project for over two years, we are shooting to close in June of this year. So this legislation, as being considered this evening, would railroad the project, and essentially, give back twenty million dollars that is at your doorstep right now. So as a, a final piece, as I believe was mentioned earlier, we would urge you to consider a carve-out, at least for affordable workforce housing. I understand recently, Howard County passed similar legislation, and Mr. Yerem, who will speak after me, has copies of that legislation that specifically carves out projects that have state participation, very similar to ours, they're workforce housing, and we would very much appreciate that consideration.
Alderman Annett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, data, and we're looking forward to the next presentation. Mr. Katz started to give us some data. We need more data in terms of what is the average size, we're getting pressure to lower the threshold for the number of units, in other words, excluding even more units, and I'm getting the sense that these are not, current legislation, which we didn't touch, has anything, eleven or more units would fall under it, and so we're, we're going back to look at that aspect of the legislation as well. So, any information you can give us that would help us sort of fill in the picture about what the average kind of project looks like, or would look like here, as opposed to in Frederick or something, would be very appreciated.
Sure, well, this project in particular, which will be located at twenty-ten West Street, it is forty-two units, eight of those will be two-bedroom, let me just make sure that I do not screw this up, and, one moment, I am going to ask Dave to confirm that, because where I wrote this down, I just want to make sure that those numbers are right, but it's two and three-bedroom units.
Thank you.
Sure.
Alderman Finnleisen?
Um, going back to the question that I asked, Ms. Dillon, are you able to answer my question about the period of time during which you must rent, and what percentage of your rent would be applicable to the sale of the home?
I'd like to defer those details to Ms. Yerem, who will tell you about how that works from beginning to end. It does remain rental for the first fifteen years, and compared to what you described about the three thousand dollars period, it's completely different, so, and, and Mr. Yerem can go into the detail about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, David Yurin.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you, my name is Dave Yerem, and I'm a principal with Pearl. The company's name, Pearl, gives you a little bit of sense of, of our focus. We, we are the partnership for income-restricted housing leadership. We needed a marketing consultant at the time, but I can tell you that the name reflects what it is that we do, which is workforce housing across an eight-state footprint. We've been in the state of Maryland since two thousand and five, and we've worked really from one end of the state to the other. The fundamental focus of the work that we do is done through public-private partnership, and when I say that, I mean, we partner with groups like Mary Ann Dillon, like HIP, who, who are locally-based, who are advocates for supportive services and housing independence, quite frankly, you know, programs to help people budget, and improve their credit, and find self-sufficiency, and ultimately, buy their own home, or move into places that, you know, they can ultimately own in some form or another. You know, we, we wrap services, it's not just housing, we wrap services around these developments to help people stabilize. I mean, these are families in some degree of crisis, and, you know, really, it's, it's really about a full-throttle approach to help solve their situation, and help them stabilize themselves. You know, this, we came here tonight, a group of us, and we were a little bit anxious, in the sense that, you know, we approached the city early in twenty-seventeen, and have been working closely with the city to develop twenty-ten West Street, and this is a twenty-million-dollar development effort, it's forty-two townhomes, plus a community resource center. We worked closely with the, the previous mayor, and with, with Councilwoman Pindell Charles, who we greatly appreciate for her support through all this period of time. We crafted a proposal, spent a, a good bit of resource, went into the state last spring, so, spring of seventeen. In June of twenty-seventeen, this project partnership was awarded sixteen-and-a-half million dollars in public resource to develop these townhomes. The sixteen-and-a-half million dollars that we won will also be further leveraged by first mortgages and other resources brought to the table. So the deal on the whole is about a twenty-million-dollar development, as I mentioned earlier. The goal is to develop townhomes that rent at rates that are fifty-one to fifty-seven percent below the market. So whereas your typical, your median market-rate rent is eighteen-hundred, nineteen-hundred dollars a month in the city of Annapolis, these rents will range from approximately four-hundred-and-seventeen a month to nine-hundred-and-eighty-nine a month. Five of the units will in fact be market rate, that means unrestricted to the income of the resident, and they will rent for fifteen-hundred a month. So this development, these forty-two units, are going to serve people whose incomes range between thirty percent of the area median income, all the way up to sixty percent of the area median income, and I'm going to throw a lot of vocabulary, we could talk about it, and then, five of the units will be unrestricted as market rate, but even those will be three-hundred a month, four-hundred a month, under the typical unrestricted units in this community. We have about six-hundred thousand dollars at this point invested in this development effort, and we are at the precipice of closing in June of this year. So, as an unintended consequence, this APFO legislation will kill us, it'll be done. The state of Maryland is very involved with us, and we, you know, we hope that, that you will understand that affordable housing in this community is something that's desperately needed. All of the units that we are proposing are affordable to people at or below sixty percent of the median income, okay? What that means is, at or below fifty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty a year, so a family of four earning fifty-four thousand or less can qualify to live in these townhomes. And that's, of course, except for the five units that are unrestricted, so it's all but five. So as we look around to try to understand what that means, you know, to personalize this a little bit, the median incomes of the following careers in Annapolis all qualify to live in these townhomes, all right, and we pulled this from the internet, from statistical atlas, occupations in Annapolis. The median income for educators is fifty-four thousand, six-hundred, they would qualify. For social service employees, fifty-three thousand, eight-hundred, they would qualify. Production, administrative, transportation, construction, healthcare, firefighters earn thirty-two thousand, three-hundred, and they're median. Food service employees, facilities employees, all of these folks who work in your community would qualify for, for this. I think to further underscore my point, and I want to echo something that Mr. Katz talked about, if you earn fifty-four thousand a year, by the time you're done with paying taxes, that fifty-four thousand is on the order of take-home about forty thousand, five-hundred a year. That's, that's about thirty-three hundred a month. How are you going to pay rent of nineteen-hundred a month if you're making thirty-three hundred a month? That's more than, that's, that's more than fifty percent of your, of your annual, of your monthly take-home, that leaves about three-hundred-and-seventy dollars a month, or a week, rather, three-hundred-and-seventy a week, to pay for everything else. What happens if your car breaks, breaks down? How are you going to go to work? What happens if there's any crisis in your life, and what about saving? You are, if you are earning at or below fifty-four thousand in this community, you are not renting an apartment, and you're surely not buying a home. You know, and the median home price is about four-hundred thousand, at today's mortgage rates for a thirty-year mortgage, you'd be paying seventeen-hundred a month just for your mortgage payment. That leaves about four-hundred-and-forty dollars a week, and we haven't paid for insurance, we haven't paid for taxes, we haven't paid for maintenance at our house, yet alone all the other needs that you've got. So these folks are being left behind in your community, and it's not a small portion of your community either. You know, when we look at the data, thirty-six percent of the population of Annapolis, thirty-six percent of the population of Annapolis earns at or below fifty thousand a year. So it's not a small portion of the group that lives in this community, it's, it's more than a third. So, you know, we're very happy to hear that you're considering a potential carve-out for workforce housing, we think it's an absolute imperative. You know, as was mentioned by Ms. Ashkenazi, it is, it is recognized, workforce housing is recognized as such a need across the state, that Howard County, who recently, as recently as January of this year, passed APFO legislation, that in some regard is similar to what you are considering. But what they did is they created a carve-out for workforce housing, and there's language in this ordinance that we think is absolutely ideal, quite frankly, it's, it's, it's very well structured for the nature of the program in which we operate. I have copies of the legislation that we can pass out to the group, and I would turn your attention... your attention to page 11 of this document. I mean, I can read these or you can consider them separately, but they basically speak to the nature and structure of the financing that we use. And they talk about partnerships with local nonprofits, like in this case with HIP. They talk about the fact that projects like ours, who have won $16.5 million in resource, are committed. I mean, we are committed in every way you could be committed and the legislation sort of accounts for that. So, I guess with that, I can open it up to questions. I know there's some question about homeownership, so we can kind of go back down that road.
Thank you, David. Alderman Onnet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I think you have hurt an appetite and it's something the sponsors and the mayor have been trying to talk about as we pass lunches and things like that. But, all of you have talked about what's going to happen, what's going to happen to developers, what's going to happen to the tax base, what's going to happen to workforce housing. What we haven't talked about, which is the underlying intent, is what's going to happen to the kids in the overcrowded situation? I went to a school in Fringe George's County, high school, that was so oversubscribed that we had to go to school in two shifts. I was lucky, I was in advanced programs and I had a father who was a college professor, so I didn't get lost, but I had friends that got lost in that kind of environment. And so, that is part of our responsibility too. And I agree, we don't have much control over the school board, but you guys do. You guys can go to them and say, "You're killing us and can't you rearrange where the kids are? Can't you rearrange where some of your magnet programs?" So, we can work as a team and work for a common goal, but we really do need, for me, it's the kids, that's first. And I think there's ways that we can make them whole and also accomplish other objectives. Alderman Finnlayson and I have spent almost our entire career on the council trying to come up with schemes for workforce housing. We haven't been successful, but it sounds like we're on the verge of some good programs. And so, I think we want to try to accomplish a lot of objectives, but also trying to take care of the kids is one of the things that this is about. So, again, I want to thank you all for coming out. We look forward to the data. Thank you for the model legislation.
Thank you.
That'll be very hopeful. This is going to rules, so it'll be taken up at some point. I don't think we're rushing this through. I think we have a lot of other things that you haven't even mentioned that we're thinking about that are other projects the city wants to move forward. So, we're not going to try to just rush this out. We're going to, we're going to think about it. School year's approaching meanover anyway, so we don't have to do it right now. So, but again, thank you, but let's also worry about what's happening to the children in the system.
Thank you.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for your testimony. If you could please email some of your testimony and the data that you have gone over. I'm also curious if, are you building this project to a green building standard?
Yes, we have a number of standards that we have to meet through the state. Enterprise Green Communities is the overarching standard by which we have to build, and that governs everything from the nature of the appliances that we use, Energy Star appliances, Energy Star lighting packages, the lights in the units, so they're more efficient, the windows, the nature of the green label carpeting that we have to use. The entire, basically, the entire envelope of the building is thicker than what you typically do in conventional development. We're building two-by-six walls with extra insulation, both in the ceiling and in the walls themselves, to create energy efficiency and in so doing, reduce energy costs. And that's mandated through this program.
Thank you.
Alderman's attorney?
I just want to ask really quickly, did you come from Cleveland, all the way from Cleveland?
I did.
Oh, I just wanted to recognize that, yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, you were supposed to say that.
[laughing]
Alderman Finnlayson?
Thank you. I have to ask the question, though I think it's probably getting to be out of place, because we're honing in on your particular product as opposed to the entire program. But, I will ask, I'd like some information on exactly how the program works.
Okay.
And what percentage of their annual rent goes toward the sale of the home?
And I can answer that question.
Okay.
Okay. And I will provide you some information as well.
Okay, because I have other questions.
And, do you want to?
But, go ahead. No, no, no.
So, in essence, in essence, this program, this housing credit program, is a subsidy on construction, not on rent. People have to pay their rent, they have to have jobs, they have to have credit, they have to pay the rent. This is a subsidy on construction. So, in essence, and I'm going to get to your question through there, so in essence, we win these credits, these income tax credits, we sell them, the money that is raised goes to fund construction. So, we take much smaller mortgages on these properties than conventional property. And as a result, we can keep, we don't have to pay debt service, the mortgages are really, really small, we don't have to pay debt service, we can keep rents very low. So, whereas conventional development needs to kind of go the opposite way. You pull as much out of construction as you possibly can, what's the cheapest thing we can build? What's the highest rent we can charge? Let's take on the most debt possible and we'll put in a little private equity and we'll kind of manage through. You know, conventional development maybe has, you know, 40%, 30% equity. These deals have 90% equity, 10% debt. There's very little debt. So, that's a long-winded way of saying that any conversion to homeownership at the end of the day functions when we, we basically, we working with our nonprofit partner can buy the partnership out in year 15 for the outstanding debt plus exit taxes. So, whatever that amount is, if it's a $2 million mortgage today, maybe it's a $1.5 million mortgage in year 15, all right? So, we have to buy out that mortgage of a million and a half, call it. We have to pay off all the other sources of money that we use to do the deal, and that divided by 42 equals the mortgage amount for the property, okay? So, there's no equity, we don't give any equity at all to the residents along the way. I think the development that you're talking about is Homes for America, and it's more of, it's just sort of gamesmanship. There's no real equity that anybody's giving. It's basically, at the end of the day, you purchase the property for the outstanding debt plus exit taxes, and then you divide it by the number of units. And in this case, you know, the challenge with homeownership in this case is these are two-over-twos. They're four-story townhomes that are walk-ups. And because of the fact that the tax credit equity market collapsed by 10% earlier in 2017, we had to change the financing structure of this thing. And we're hesitant to commit, I mean, to homeownership, to selling these units, because I'm not sure they're going to be affordable to people based on the amount of additional money that we're going to have to pay back in year 15. But what we are committing to, so these are affordable rental units, what we are committing to right now as we stand here tonight, and if we can figure out homeownership, we will. But HIP provides longstanding, deep-seated homeownership counseling and training, credit counseling, budgeting, learning how to maintain a unit. There's a certain kind of responsibility that you have to have when you maintain your unit. We do all sorts of programs, similar to Homes for America, that when you kind of maintain your unit well, you get perks. And in some cases, that's rent reduction, in some cases, that's, you can paint your unit and you can kind of turn it into yours in a little bit more of a way than you'd ever be able to do as a part of a rental. We do a lot to enhance people's ability to pull themselves up. And some units, some structures lend themselves very well to for-sale in year 15, some are challenging. You know, the development that Kim Ashkenazi showed, that Oakwood Family Homes in Anarundel County, is single-family homes on a subdivision. And those are built and focused on sale in year 15. We actually can't charge over a certain amount because they have to remain affordable to their residents. It's a beautiful structure, we could talk about it at some length, it's amazing, it's why we got into this business. Selling two-over-two towns with the kind of money that's on it may or may not be perfect. So, we're kind of trying to figure that out, so.
Do the renters have the option of buying their units prior to the end of the 15-year period?
The 15-year period is a federally mandated period. So, nobody can do anything during that period. But what you, what you do get is very long, consistent ownership. You know, there is no development that you will do in Annapolis that's conventional where the owner will stand up here and say, "I will be here for the next 15 years at least," because their goal is to sell it. We are in this with our partner HIP, we are financially guaranteeing it, we will be your partner for a decade and a half at least, and more than likely, we'll be there for 30 years because of the way these things are structured.
Or 45 years, is how I'm counting it.
Okay.
What if their financial situation changes for the better?
I mean, we all want that. And the beauty is if, you know, we kind of look at this, quite frankly, as step up, right? This is, this is the way to stabilize. You can't, you can't even take a step forward unless you have a stable, clean, safe environment to live. You need good nutrition, you need the ability to pull yourself up through education, and you need stable housing. That's, that's step one. And if you're doing well, if you're doing well, great, then, then continue to move on and move out and go buy something, and that's awesome, that's wonderful, that's fulfilling our purpose. It almost feels more valuable to your families can kind of move through this property onto the next great thing. You know, ironically, this program was done, was created in 1986 by the Reagan administration. And part of the concept was that if you're doing better, you shouldn't get penalized. So, if you qualify on day one, I happen to be a Democrat, but if you qualify on day one, you know, and you're making, let's say you're making $1 beneath the income restriction, you're in, baby. Three years later, you're doing well, you're getting raises, you're moving up the ladder, you only have to qualify on day one, there's no penalty for doing well, right? So, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. I just want to say that these guys are bending over backwards to do this with the city. They are going to contribute to the light on West Street that has become the Gibraltar Light, which has become a nightmare of a turn. And then, they've also agreed to connect the popular bike trail from downtown, if we can get it to them, through their property and on to West Street, and then hopefully on to, and that would go underneath the bridge and off to the hospital and the mall, or we could go across West Street and go to the parole town center. And that not only is an amenity for the city, but it's, I see, is a way to get to a job. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Is there anyone else present who would like to speak? Please come forward.
Good evening. Sorry, I missed the sign-up sheet tonight. My name is Tom Baum and I live at 121 Spa View Avenue in the city of Annapolis. I'm here tonight to speak in opposition of ordinance 0818. In my professional capacity, I'm president of Bezuto Homes. Over the past several years, I've been actively involved in development in this city, as many of you know, primarily along the West Street corridor. I recently completed one residential project, the Uptown at Murray Hill, located at the intersection of South Gate and West Street. I'm about to start construction on 23 new condominiums over ground-floor retail, also along West Street, across from the Lowe's Hotel. And directly across from the Weston Hotel, I am proposing with an application into the city for 18 townhomes on the site of the vacant parking lot in Auto World Car Center, similar in style to the Uptown project. I believe all three of these projects represent terrific examples of redevelopment that contribute significantly to the revitalization of our town. I cannot claim the spark that ignited the inner West Street corridor, which is nothing short of remarkable, but my developments there are helping West Street flourish into a walkable and vibrant area that is supported by the local community and that everyone is proud to be a part of. And along with these developments comes significant tax revenue, as well as development fees that the city desperately needs. Where Uptown stands today, seven years ago, was literally the site of drug dealers and prostitutes. Now, hundreds of thousands of dollars in tax revenue are generated annually there. The development site I'm proposing across from the Weston is a superfund site. It was contaminated severely by a previous user there and has sat vacant for years and years. My development I'm proposing will clean up that site, as well as cleaning up adjoining neighboring homes that suffer from the chemical vapors that have come from that site. So, there is a significant purpose beyond just the sheer development aspect of itself. And we all know that nothing pays taxes like empty land parcels, don't we? So, what about the cost of these developments? As it relates to schools, I can tell you that there was not a single school-aged child that attended public school from the initial purchase of the 30 homes at Uptown at Murray Hill. And does anyone really expect that 23 two-bedroom condos over retail will generate school-aged children? The fact is that urban walkable communities are not designed for children, and as such, they don't generate school-aged kids. I've heard discussion that Annapolis should be following the county to align with their APF standards. But consider this, when Anarundel came up with their APF legislation, as David Katz spoke to, they specifically exempted school APF from town centers such as Odenton and parole town center. And there was one expressed reason in the testimony when they came up with why those were exempt, and it's because higher-density areas attract few new students, as I testified to in my own developments. And isn't Annapolis really a town center? That's really, these higher-density locations, particularly along West Street, do not generate school-aged children. The consequence of passing this APF revision will certainly result in stopping new development, but it will not address the actual causes of school overcrowding. What it will do is push even more growth at our doorstep, right at parole, where there will be continued growth and continued building, and where taxes don't reach the city's coffers. Please, I urge you not to support 0818. Thank you very much.
Alderman Onnet?
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. So, you heard me make the plea to the last speaker. You do have some power, you probably have more power than we do to go to the county school board, or at least you can join us in going there. I think it was Mr. Katz who said something about addressing the crack in the basement. See, we do listen. And, you know, he's right. I mean, really, this is a problem that is generated at the school board and where these programs are allocated and how they don't address them. And we need partners, so, and help in approaching the school board. So, in addition to all the data and the thoughts you all have given us tonight, if you could talk to us about ways that we can go right to the problem and solve that, then this legislation won't have any meaning. It won't, we won't be overcapacity.
I actually think you're helping the school board solve a problem, because as soon as they can redline Annapolis from having to deal with schools because there's no more development, they can move on to other parts of the county. So, I think it'll have an unintended consequence that there will be no more pressure put on. In fact, there'll be just the opposite, they'll say, "If there's no development in Annapolis, let's move on to the other parts of the county where we are getting pressure."
Alderman Savage?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions, but first of all, you said superfund site, but I don't believe we have any superfund sites in the city.
It was contaminated years ago by a dry cleaning chemical. I think it's considered, it's in the superfund list anyway, yeah.
Okay. I'll have to look into that. Question though, what's the average price of the homes that you're going to be building?
They range from $500 to $800,000.
So, no affordable units per se?
Not in these developments.
What about moderately priced units?
We are part of the MPE program there. Now, of course, you know, this is sort of quickly become a forum about affordable housing, and I commend the council for really wanting to put energy into affordable housing. And my company is one of the largest providers of affordable housing in the state. In fact, I'm just finishing up 180 for-sale affordable workforce housing in a partnership with the city of Baltimore. So, while I build very expensive homes, I also, and our company also, develops a lot of affordable housing. And so, everything has its place. But it's very difficult to achieve many different things on a single site, particularly when you're talking about small development sites like 8- when you're talking about small development sites like eighteen units, when you have extraordinary cleanup costs and then cannot build a higher density as a result. For instance, we can't go under, underground at all with, with the site across from the Weston. You can't afford to build affordable housing. I think Ms. Dillon testified that, that you can't do these projects on their own without significant subsidies. And our subsidies are going into the ground to clean up sites. So while we support it, you can't always do everything at the, you know, in one spot at the same time. So we, we're definitely supporters of that, but I don't want to be painted with a brush that we're, we're insensitive to wanting and desiring to, to develop affordable housing, because we do quite a bit of it.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
I declare, I declare the public hearing on O dash eight dash eighteen open until Monday, April ninth, two thousand and eighteen.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry. Should I?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a, as the last speaker noted, a large focus today on perhaps the unintended consequences that this may have on housing in the city. I'd like to ask that it be referred to the Housing and Human Welfare Committee as well for examination.
Yeah. Good idea. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance O eleven eighteen Stanton Center lease agreement, Anorundal Workforce Development Corporation, for the purpose of approving the lease for certain city-owned space in the Stanton Center to Anorundal Workforce Development Corporation, and matters generally relating to said lease of city-owned property.
So we have no speakers signed up to speak. Would anyone like to speak on this? Seeing no speakers, declare the public hearing clo, on O dash one oh dash eighteen closed.
On your agenda, please? It's on ours.
I missed it. My apologies.
What's it?
The O ten eighteen. That would be the next item on our agenda.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance O ten eighteen Police Advisory Board, for the purpose of establishing the Police Advisory Board, authorizing the powers and duties of the board, and matters generally relating to the Police Advisory Board.
Are there anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Savage?
Thank you. No, I just had a, I thought that the city manager, he told us he was going to get somebody from the police department here this evening to speak about this before the public... Oh, excellent.
Thank you.
In consideration of the ordinance, the chief apologizes for being unable to be here. The, the, the ordinance, what it, what it's designed to do is allow us to set up a, an advisory committee comprised of neighborhood leaders who can advise the police commissioner on the, the police chief on the areas of policy, on the areas of community concerns, and on the areas of crime control strategies. The objective of the committee would be to do two things, provide information to the chief from neighborhoods, and then also to provide the chief's message back to the neighborhoods, essentially creating a two-way communication, not just a one-way communication. The chief asks that the, the committees be selected from a diverse group of, of people, and he's insistent that there are people, that it be representative people who don't always agree with him. He wants people that will argue with him, give him reasons why something ought not to be done, to challenge his assumptions. In addition, the, he asks that the, as stated in the ordinance, that the, it be a three-year term. The reason for the three-year term is the, he would like that the members of the board be trained at the Citizens Police Academy, that they be trained in certain areas of, of public safety. And there is a certain ramp-up period for that, that would permit them to give valuable counsel and informed counsel. And that would be, that would be the substance of the, of the ordinance.
Alderman Onnet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of surprised, given all the chatter that we saw in the media, that there's no one here. Some of the pushback that I had read was that this was sort of hand-selected and that it's in some way trying to avoid doing something, I don't know what, having a police commissioner or something like that. I don't know if you heard or saw any of that, and if you have any response to that kind of a critique. Clearly, this is what the chief wanted, but did, did you see and take into account any of those nonexistent comments?
The, there has been a lot of interest on the part of communities to have the ability to impact on, I would give a specific example, for ex, if we were to, say, step up traffic enforcement in a particular community, that, there were some community members that wanted an opportunity to be able to do two-way conversation with the police department, that we could inform the communities of, of what the objective is of that, of that traffic, for example, in the example I gave. So there has been a lot of interest in the community for that, to be able to inform the, the chief. And then the chief also has an interest in sending the communication back down the other way, so there are misunderstandings about our, our crime control strategies. So as far as pushback, I, I think the only, the only substantive question from the community was, I think it was a, a point of clarification, the difference between a citizens advisory board and a citizens review board. In many areas of the country, a review board has oversight authorities, specific legal authorities reviewing, say, discipline of the police department and that sort of thing. That is not what's being proposed here. What's being proposed here is simply an informational, offering guidance. So there is, there is a key distinction between an advisory board and a review board. And I think it was that, it was that key misunderstanding about what was being proposed that generated some of the pushback that you referenced.
So if I can engage in just a little dialogue, remember when we had the, I'm trying to think of the name of it, but the commission a couple of years ago, when you were chair, Sheila, and they were recommending, I thought it was, a citizens review board. This is not that. It doesn't preclude that, but it is not that. So, I mean, you and...
Your thinking is correct.
Pardon?
I said your recollection is correct.
Okay.
And I think this is why we wanted the major to speak to it this evening, to clarify the difference between an advisory board and a review board. This is not a adjudic, adjudicable board. Did I say that right?
Quasi-judicial or...
Yes.
...type of board.
So, but that was one of the big concerns from the community and from the press, I believe. So...
That's a very good clarification, yes. Exactly.
Thank you.
Nor is the board adjudicative.
English tea drink.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, a person that I'm familiar with had applied for it under the initial constitution of it before it was a part of the code. And it's their understanding that they had been selected for it, and they were sharing with excitement that they were gonna tour the police department. Have you all made selections or reached out to people who have expressed an interest?
There are preliminary conversations with some community leaders, but there hasn't been final selection. One of the things that the chief's interested in doing is making sure that it's a broad selection of individuals from both geographically, economically, with different interests. And specifically, his, his interest is in getting people that bring a broad array of experiences as part of his advisory committee. He doesn't want people to just agree with him. That's not what he's looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. I declare the public hearing on O dash one oh dash eighteen closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, because I took this item out of order, I wish to correct that inadvertent mistake and present the next item on the agenda as a public hearing on ordinance O eleven eighteen Stanton Center lease agreement, Anorundal Workforce Development Corporation, for the purpose of approving the lease for certain city-owned space in the Stanton Center to Anorundal Workforce Development Corporation, and matters generally relating to said lease of city-owned property.
There is no one signed up to sign. Would anyone like to speak on this? Okay, seeing no one, we declare the public hearing on O dash one one dash eighteen closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next, excuse me, the next item on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance zero dash twelve dash eighteen Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Authorities' attendance at meetings, for the purpose of permitting members of certain boards, commissions, committees, and authorities to attend meetings via telephone conference, limiting the attendance of members via telephone conference to non-quasi-judicial government units, permitting attendance by a member via telephone conference to count toward the meeting quorum, and matters generally relating to permitting certain meeting attendance via telephone conference.
There is no one signed up to speak. Would anyone like to speak in the audience? Okay.
Yes.
Alderman Attorney?
I don't know if you got a, I think you got an electronic copy from Mayor Hillman's concern about Robert's Rules of Order being, you know, sort of jeopardized in this, in this type of correspondence by phone, and if that was addressed or not. Did you all get a copy of his email? Just wanted to make sure. It, you know, if Robert's Rules, Rules of Order were being followed during these meetings, if, this Mayor Hillman seems to think that, ex-Mayor Hillman seems to think that, you know, gestures and, and what have you, talking with your hands like I do, is something that could be lost in, in this. And I just wanted to express his concern.
Thank you. It's a risky one with an Australian up here. Okay, I declare the public hearing on O dash one two eighteen closed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is legislative actions on second readers, beginning with resolution R dash one eighteen, wrecked or non-operating vehicles on public property fined for the purpose of establishing a fine for a violation of section twelve dot four four dot O three O dot capital A of the Code of the City of Annapolis concerning leaving wrecked or non-operating vehicles on public property.
Is there a motion to adopt R dash one dash eighteen on second reader?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
It's not that bad.
Proposed amendments to R dash one eighteen Public Safety Committee, proposed amendments?
Yes, sir. As you can see, amendment number one, we go to page one, lines two, four, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-six, thirty, and thirty-five in the table, strike "non-operating," and substitute with the word "inoperable." As far as amendment is, number two is concerned...
Which line, please?
I'm sorry.
What line?
Wrecked, oh, line one.
Oh, great.
Let me see, um, let me, oh, let's see. Yes, that would be at the top of the page. So it'd be lines, page one on lines two, four, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-six, thirty, and thirty-five.
Are we doing it one at a time?
Oh, you've got some too? Alderman Onnet?
Yes.
Are we doing them together or just one...
No, I was waiting to make sure you had...
Oh, no, I got it.
Okay.
Sorry. I got it, yeah. So that's a motion to adopt amendment number one?
Yes.
Are you looking for that?
Yes, we're looking for that, unless we want to take them together, but we can do them separately.
I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Can I have a question for clarification? Did you just move the one amendment or as a group?
Yes, yeah. Amendment number one.
And I just want another point of clarification. Some of the lines appear to be on page two rather than page one. Is that correct? I know that there was, there was mention of lines two and four. Looking at line nineteen, I, I'm not sure, at least on my copy, I don't know if I see a, the word "non-operating" or "inoperable" on line nineteen of page one. Right, that, and I just want to make sure, I didn't hear the difference between page one and page two. I just want to make sure that was clear for the record.
Alderman Onnet?
It should be twenty, it should be twenty-one.
It's just wherever "non-operating" is chosen, we're gonna make it...
Right, right. Then that might be the best way of handling it. Thank you.
Alderman Onnet, you have some amendments?
Oh.
This has been seconded already.
Well, I thought we already voted on it.
We voted on amendment, that's what I was saying, we voted on amendment number one.
Right.
Because you said amendment number one, and she said as a group. That's why I was trying to figure out which one you were doing.
Oh. Yeah, no, I did have, I had a question on amendment number two.
Oh, okay. Then we'll take number one alone.
Okay. And we're finished voting on number one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. As to amendment number two, page one, line thirty-five, in the table under the fine for initial offense, strike one hundred dollars and substitute with fifty dollars.
So I'll move, I'll move the amendment.
Yeah, we're on the resolution.
Okay. So I've moved the amendment. It needs a second.
Discussion? Alderman Finlayson?
I guess my question is about the amount. We're reducing the initial fine from a hundred to fifty and then keeping the second and all other fines at a hundred? Traditionally, it's the other way around.
That Alderman Henson was the one who proposed this, and she can explain it.
Alderman Henson? Henson, can you explain that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Explain yourself.
Under the county's code, section twelve, three, twelve dash three dash one oh four B, parking a vehicle abandoned more than forty-eight hours, the fine is only twenty-five dollars. And when I saw that our fine was a hundred dollars, I felt that that was excessive in light of that in every area surrounding, it is only twenty-five. It was actually a compromise between Alderman, Pale, and myself to maybe make it an escalator on there, so that it starts at fifty, which is double the county, but still, still in line with the spirit of what the amendment intended to charge. But then for offenses after that, that it would increase to a greater penalty because you're presumed on notice at that point, should you then violate again. So it was my intention to try to bring it more in line with the fee structure of the county.
Okay.
Alderman Onnet?
Okay, I, I accept that, but the thrust of what Mr. Gordon wrote up is these are largely recalcitrant people and people who ignore fees and so forth, and that's why I was thinking a hundred was sort of generous. I don't, maybe Mr. Gordon can enlighten us. Are these people going to be responsive to different dollar amounts, or are they not going to be responsive no matter what it is?
Good evening. Rick Gordon, Department of Transportation. Thank you, Alderman. In some cases, up to this point, we have been able to contact the vehicle owner, and they are responsive. However, this was written, keeping in mind that we were also running into situations where because there was no penalty, the information would be ignored. So I think the fifty dollars...
people going to be responsive to different dollar amounts, or are they not going to be responsive no matter what it is?
Good evening. Rick Gordon, Department of Transportation. Thank you, Alderman. In some cases, up to this point, we have been able to contact the vehicle owner and they are responsive. However, this was written, keeping in mind that we were also running into situations where because there was no penalty, the information would be ignored. So I think the $50 may work, particularly if it escalates beyond that. It's still a penalty, which we don't have at this point. So I think it would work.
Alderman Finlayson?
Thank you.
Are you still?
Thank you. I think, to put it in simpler terms in criminal law, the idea is that, hey, you didn't learn the first time. So, you know, we'll come down on you that much harder the second time. It's not a complicated reason that, and we're not talking about, you know, second or third offense being a thousand dollars or something really very, very high. I think it's just as much as anything symbolic of what we need to do.
Alderman Finlayson?
I guess my, my thinking is you give them the big fine up front to stop them from repeating the behavior. You know, my ward is one of those wards where we see it frequently on just a few streets. And we're trying to encourage the practice to stop. And so my concern with lowering the initial fine is, well, it's only a $50 fine, you know, as opposed to, maybe they'll have a different response if it's a hundred dollar fine. They won't do it again. So, you know, that's one way of looking at it.
I'm, I'm happy to accept the committee's thinking. So I would, I'll be happy to support this amendment.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the Second Amendment, R, on, R-118?
We did move, we moved and seconded. We need to...
We're in favor.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Eyes have it?
You can always change it.
Now, is there a motion to adopt R-118 as amended on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, sir. Mayor Buckley?
Aye.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Aye.
Alderman Henson?
Aye.
Alderman Savage?
Aye.
Alderman Arnett?
Aye.
Alderman Tierney?
Aye.
Alderman Payon?
Aye.
Alderman Pindell Charles?
Aye.
Alderman Finlayson?
Aye.
Right, yes. Passed. Mr. City Attorney, please present the next item on the agenda.
The next item on the agenda on second reader is ordinance 03-18: Abandoned Vehicles for the Purpose of Permitting an Authorized Agent of the City of Annapolis to Exercise Limited Enforcement Authority in the Empoundment of Abandoned Vehicles, Establishing a Fine for Leaving Wrecked or Non-Operating Vehicles on Public Property and Matters Generally Relating to the Abandonment of Vehicles.
Is there a motion to adopt O-3-18 on second reader?
So moved.
Second.
For a second. Thank you. Discussion?
Your amendments.
Proposed amendments?
Okay, I would assume that we're going to take them independently again.
Yes, please.
Amendment number one?
No, please don't.
Actually, I'd move, I'd move that we take them together.
Okay.
Together.
What's the difference?
I'd move that we take them all together.
I'll take Public Safety.
Most of them are not substantive.
Right.
In nature, there's one that is a little bit, but...
I second that.
I'll third that.
Amendment number one, on page two, line sixteen, after the word tractor, insert the word machine.
We yield, we yield. We're ready to vote.
Amendment number two, line twenty-one, after successor, insert on any public property street or highway, strike line twenty-one after highway through line twenty-three. Amendment number three, page two, line twenty-six, after the word impoundment, insert and recovery, line twenty-seven after and, and insert may. Amendment number four, page one, line five, after the word property, insert streets and highways, line twenty-six after property, insert streets and highways. Amendment number five, page two, line thirty-three, insert the letter B in addition to paragraph C of this section, a partly dismantled, non-operating, wrecked, or junked vehicle left on any public property, street, or highway, may be impounded by the police department or any authorized agent. The costs related to impoundment and recovery shall be borne by the owner of the vehicle and may constitute a lien against the vehicle. Amendment number six.
Whoops, shouldn't that read inoperable, not non-operating?
Good point.
It comes later.
And that's the next one. Amendment number six, good point. Page two, line seventeen, insert the letter E. Inoperable means any circumstance which causes the vehicle reasonably to appear to not operate. Amendment number seven, page two, line thirty-one, after the word leave, insert the word unattended. Amendment number eight, page one, lines four, twenty-five, page two, lines twenty-nine, thirty-one, strike "non-operating" and substitute with "inoperable."
And I suppose, as a friendly amendment, I, I guess someone would need to do sort of a global search and make sure wherever "non-operating" appears, it changes to "inoperable" based on what I've been hearing this evening. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Are you moving?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Savage?
I just have a question. It might be for the City Attorney, but, so are we able to put a lien against the vehicle? And I know, I've heard of that for houses, but I've never heard of that for vehicles.
I would have to look into that to ensure that, that we are able to do that. I know that we are, we're sort of mirroring, mirroring a little bit state law and moving and making a local law based on that. And I'll, I'll make sure that, that that's something that's legal to do. Or I'll make sure that we know if it's legal to do or not to do.
You can certainly lean against it.
Did we want to include that or, and wait, or did we want to go ahead and make the adjustment later?
Wait till we're sued.
Wait till we're sued and then...
I got you.
I, I think that, well, from a process standpoint, you can approve it and then subject to legal review to ensure that that is permissible.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So now we're ready to vote on all the amendments?
Is there a second for Alderman Pindell Charles's amendments?
We moved them all and seconded.
Right, okay.
So now we just vote.
Is there a motion to adopt O-13, O-3-18 on second reader as amended?
Don't we have to vote on the amendments?
Yeah, we've got to vote on the amendments. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We'll always say aye when you say that.
Motion passed.
Adopt as amended.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt O-3-18 as amended on second reader?
So moved.
We have other amendments.
Right.
Yeah, we have transportation.
And then we, then we get to those. We got two more, I think.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Moving on.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt O-3-18 on third reader?
No, because we have more amendments.
Two more, two more sheets.
So we have to take up transportation, and then, of course, Mark had to get his.
Okay, I thought he was doing it the right way.
We have two more.
Transportation amendments.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay.
Alderman Tierney, did you want to handle the Transportation Committee Proposed Amendments?
Okay. Alderman Savage, please introduce your amendments.
He doesn't have it.
Alderman Rodriguez's?
No, there's the transportation.
We have transportation and then Alderman Rodriguez.
There's yours.
Right.
Alderman Rodriguez?
All right. Transportation Committee had two amendments. Amendment number one, page two of the ordinance, line twenty-eight. I don't know if you want me to read all of this, if you have it in front of you. Okay?
No.
And it, but, but what it does is, it gives the same hearing, what would be the word, they are subject to the same hearing requirement as, as, as they would otherwise in the code. And, and then we don't, that we, yeah, it's all, it's all part of that language on hearing. And then amendment number two was inserting that and making the correct wordsmith for that. And then, yeah, that's it for transportation. But do, can I have a motion to accept amendment as amended by the Transportation Committee? Amendments, we can do them both together? Amendment number one and amendment number two?
So you're moving the amendment?
Yes. I moved.
So moved. All those in favor?
No.
No. Discussion? Sorry.
Wait, what are we, what are we on? The...
Discussing amendments.
Okay.
Discussing amendments.
Amendment number one.
Yeah, on the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
Alderman?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would object to not, paragraph D four, simply, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. The reason being is that if the police realize that there is a very good explanation for why the vehicle was there, or it should not have been towed, not that our police department ever makes mistakes, that would be in there too. Why do they have to go to a hearing, go to the appeals board to give them their money back and send them on their way? That doesn't, I appreciate the spirit of it, but I think that there are many situations where this would be more than an inconvenience. I think it would prohibit police from doing their, doing their job, and that is to be fair with people and give them their money back if, if it shouldn't have been towed.
Any other discussion on that?
So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
I did, I forwarded that to the Transportation Committee. Thank you for taking it on. There, it, it mirrors the language that appears in another part of the city code. And I'm not sure why those two parts are separated by multiple pieces of code. But the other part references when your vehicle is towed for reasons that are not related to abandonment or being a wrecked or junked vehicle. And it gives the person that right to relief. I don't, I wouldn't want us to be inconsistent. And you have that remedy and that right of relief worded in one way in the part of the code, and then another part that's designed to mirror that says something different and has a different procedure or process. I think if we're going to include the right to relief, that they should mirror each other, which perhaps may necessitate amending the other part at, at a later time and this part at that time as well. But I'd like to keep them consistent if we could.
Well, I think the situations are many very different situations where the police would have a vehicle towed. It could be a crime was committed there. It could be the vehicle's disabled because of an accident, blocking traffic, that have nothing, nothing whatsoever to do with abandonment. This strictly has to do with abandonment, which I think is quite different from what the other section of the code is intended to cover. I, look, I understand why that, you know, we don't want people willy-nilly giving, giving individuals their money back. We'd rather have it done through a quasi-judicial proceeding. But I, I'm just saying that there are a lot of situations where somebody might come in and have a very good explanation for why that car was there for a certain period of time, and, and why make them go to the Board of Appeals? Why make them go through the time and the expense when, you know, a common sense approach would be, hey, okay, look, you're right, you made a mistake, or you're right, shouldn't have been done, here's your money back. That's all.
I agree. I think that what I wouldn't want to do is put an undue burden or have it be, I don't want to use the word discriminating, but if the circumstances are different by which your vehicle was impounded, I wouldn't want one part of the code to state it one way and give you one right to relief and another one give you something different. And then we're differentiating on the circumstances that resulted. But I would, Alderman Payon, encourage having both of them mirror your suggestion of having it be less of a burdensome process.
Look, I haven't studied the other section, so, you know, you may very, very well be exactly right. I...
I don't think this goes.
I don't, I don't think, I'm just, I issued a towing license in my office, and I think you're kind of talking about two different things. The city has contractors who tow cars. So you would have to call the police department for different reasons. They, they get a license. And actually, they're going to be on your agenda to be approved in June. And the city has two tow companies right now, Masons and JP. And they call them on different occasions to pick up vehicles for different reasons. So that's why they're in two different sections, because one is under our office and we don't do anything with this section under transportation. They're two totally different things. Because we give them, the city gives them permissions to do certain things based on calls from like the city SP Plus or the police for picking up vehicles. And they wouldn't be reimbursed for those funds if we were involved with it, I don't think.
Alderman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, I support Alderman Henson's point of view. And my understanding of reading this is that there is the first option for a hearing where it's directly with the chief of police or now the authorized agent. And so then they, if they say, you know, you know, whatever their response is, if that's not how the resident who was affected and penalized by this sees it, then they have now another opportunity to appeal that singular decision by SP Plus or the chief of police. So I think it's only fair that we accommodate that so that there's more transparency and more informed decision-making in that process.
Alderman Savage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so I think it's, I know for some issues, I think going to the Board of Appeals makes sense, but for municipal infractions, those typically go to the courts. I know for, when I was enforcing settlement control with the city, grading settlement control violations go to the, which court is it?
District Court.
The district court, thank you. They go to the district court and not to the Board of Appeals. I'd rather not bog down the Board of Appeals with these kinds of infractions.
Yeah, I guess I'll just... Alderman Arnett? The Board of Appeals isn't constructed. Its authority doesn't cover this. It's only land use.
I'm not sure that has jurisdiction.
So you would have to rewrite the mandate for the Board of Appeals, or alternatively create a different appeals mechanism within the city. But, good Lord, we can't, we can't get them involved in all of these things. It's hard enough to do titles 2021 and 22. So I don't think this is appropriate. It would have to be some other mechanism.
Alderman Tierney?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm having, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We just need to look up that other code reference and discuss it. It might just not be applicable.
It's 12.20.220 in the city code where it's referenced originally, where the language mirrors from.
But does it say the Board of Appeals?
It's my understanding that the language that was inserted, it does in fact say the Board of Appeals. And that is under, it's titled Towing of Vehicles-Release-Hearing.
I can't get into my code. I can't see, do we have Board of Appeals, volume two? Yeah, so I can't, I can't get in, but we need to look at what the, the authorities are for the Board of Appeals.
You give us some clarification? What was the section that it...
Twelve. 12.20.220.
Just when I thought we were going to get home early.
Towing of Vehicles-Release-Hearing.
He's just, he's looking that up. And I just think for the sake of efficiency, I know Mr. Ellison, he takes all the municipal infraction cases to the district court more or less at the same time and gets through them pretty quickly. I, I'm, I'm just curious to know, I guess some of your, I'd like to know more about your rationale for going to the Board of Appeals instead of district court.
I, I just wanted to make sure that there was some appeal process, and I mirrored the language that was in existing city code, having, having assumed that that language was, was drafted fairly accurately and, and that comported with existing law and procedures. I don't have a preference if it's the Board of Appeals or the district court that hears it. I would just want to make sure that we...
Well, I was going to suggest we, since I don't think there's a huge urgency, we postpone. Boy, Board of Appeals shall conduct a hearing. I don't think they've ever done that. In my entire history, I don't think any of these have ever been taken to the Board of Appeals.
And it looks as if it's, it's on the, it's on the question of verifying that the vehicle is not stolen. It looks like that's one of the, the main issues that would be addressed in subtitle A.
I can, I can see people resigning from the Board of Appeals. Oh, yes. No, please don't, stay.
Alderman Payon?
Mr. Mayor, I, I don't think that somebody ought to have to go to the, to an actual courthouse to get a hundred dollars back, or whatever it costs to have a car towed these days, possibly a little more than that, depends on when and where. In the words of one of my colleagues, I think that maybe we shouldn't let the perfect get in the way of the good, and I'm, I'm ready to go ahead with this thing. I, I think that, I, I don't think four ought to be in there, but, you know, let's, we can continue working on this, let, let's get it done. I mean, we badly need this in certain parts of town, and, I mean, I almost feel like we can work out, as long as we're continuing to work on this, that we can, we can work out our differences a month or two or three down the road.
Alderman Tierney?
I was just wondering, in case we relook at, at the code reference and realize it's not applicable, maybe we just make a code reference here instead of spelling it all out again? Do you know what I'm trying to say? I mean, I have to commend all, you know, my, my colleague for coordinating and with trying to follow due process, but it doesn't sound like it's a valid code in this, you know? So I just don't know, I'm just looking in the wordsmithing of it, if we just make the code reference that we follow the same hearing process instead of just spelling it all out again, just a suggestion.
Alderman Arnett?
In the happy circumstances that our next council meeting is next Monday, I, I would really make a motion to postpone this. I, I cannot get into the city code, so I cannot look at the authorizing legislation for the Board of Appeals, but I have looked at it many times before, and I never remembered them handling traffic tickets. And I, I think I would really question the wisdom of loading them up with that kind of thing that is so foreign to land use, which is what they are versed in doing. So I would really ask that we postpone for one week until we can get a clarification of the duties of the Board of Appeals. I'm not arguing that there shouldn't be an appeals mechanism, I'm just really worried about it going to the Board of Appeals.
I'd like to second.
Alderman Savage? Okay, so we have a second? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those against? All right, eyes have it.
Postpones our rest.
See you next, see you next week.
Does that include amendment number two? Okay.
All right. Mr. City Attorney, what's the next item on the agenda?
Madam City Clerk?
Thankfully, Mr. Mayor, the agenda has been completed.
Mr. Mayor, we still have another set of amendments to this legislation. Do we want to postpone all of them? Because.
Postponing the ordinance is what I do.
Yeah.
Rod, Mark.
That'll all come back next week, all right? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Only, only one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Why are you looking over there? I'm the only one that's authorized to make that motion? No.
It's his best name.
Only kidding? Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
All right. Yee-hoo. Might be a record early.